Welcome to the Barnstable School Committee Meeting for May 3, 2023. I'm going to start off by 1.1 District Vision and Core Values. District Vision: The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping students' needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Moving on to 1.2, Statement by the Chair Video and Audio Recording of the Meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Channel 18. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then notify the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Seeing nobody, we will now move on. I will now turn it over to Kathy.
I would like to have a moment of silence in memory of John L. Reed and Dylan Gerald, who recently passed. Mr. Reed was a longtime member of the faculty of Barnstable High School, who clearly had a great impact on his students as a teacher and a Monty Club advisor. He also invested deeply and personally in recruiting faculty members of color to our district. The impact he had within Barnstable Public Schools extended throughout the regional and national community. His impact included contributions to the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the National Educators Association, Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, the Cape Cod NAACP, Barnstable County Human Rights Commission, and as a founding member of the Zion Union Heritage Museum here in Hyannis. He will be missed by so many people in our community. Mr. Dylan Gerald passed away on April 14. He had been serving the Barnstable Public Schools as the Director of Daycare at Barnstable High School, as well as the Director of our Before and After Care Program at the elementary schools. Mr. Gerald was a kind-hearted and gentle educator. He developed strong relationships with the teachers in his programs, and our high school interns got to know him well. The program was often short-staffed, and Dylan always rolled up his sleeves and did whatever he needed to do to keep services running, including teaching in the infant room for the vast majority of this school year. Mr. Gerald believed the best in students. He had a promising career as a leader ahead of him, and we will most certainly miss him. May they both rest in peace.
Thank you, Kathy. We're now going to move on to highlights in education. So 2.1 is highlights from the BHS Student Field Trip to Italy in April of 2023. So I'd ask those folks to come forward.
Hello, High School Committee. It's lovely to see everybody again. My name is Ms. Morgan Gray, and I was one of the two leaders and chaperones of the trip, along with Ms. Marsha Wittrall. As you can see, we've got a slideshow running with some of our highlights from the trip. Here we are getting ready to leave, and throughout the slideshow, you'll see highlights from our students' visits to Herculaneum Pompeii, climbing a very foggy Mount Vesuvius, Rome, and Florence. So I mostly would like them to talk about the trip, but you'll see a bunch of different things, and hopefully they... Oh, I'd like to introduce, sorry, here, senior Hannah Jensen, junior Olivia Thompson, and sophomore William Penny, who all came on the trip with us, and they're going to talk a little bit about their experiences, so.
Welcome. Hi.
Thanks for having me. So yeah, the trip was like really, really fun. Personally, I love art, so it was so interesting. There were so many art museums that we got to go to. It was so, it was just like really fun for me to be able to like experience firsthand all of like this like amazing culture. And yeah, just like see like a lot of like classics, like the Statue of David was ginormous. It was so cool. We ate a lot of gelato. We went out to restaurants. We got to just like experience Italy, which is just, it's a very, it's very beautiful culture with like so much just art everywhere, so many like statues, and so much history. And it was just really fun to be able to like go out with all of our friends and experience that together. Thank you.
Excellent. Cool, thank you very much. Hi.
Hi. I think one of my biggest takeaways, and this is like not in a negative way, but it made me feel really small in a really cool way, because you're in this modern area, right? Like, for say, in Rome, and intertwined in the city are just these ancient ruins, and you're walking around, and you turn the corner, and there's the Roman Forum, like right there in the picture. It's crazy, or like the Colosseum. And like, I don't know, it still hasn't really hit me that I like was just in Italy like a couple of weeks ago, and saw all of these incredible pieces of art and buildings, and like just looking through the pictures now, I'm like, I actually saw that in person. I can't believe it. And like Hannah said, it was amazing. Everything was beautiful. Food was amazing. I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna live it down, like, ugh. The gelato alone, I could live off it for the rest of my life, honestly. I think the amount of gelato I ate was probably equivalent to my body weight, but it was really, it was such a great experience. It was, it was really great, like, you know, I don't know what else to say, like, I went to Italy, it was, it was just amazing.
Excellent, thank you. Hi.
Hi. I'd definitely say it was worth the trip. It was amazing. Just being in another country in and of itself was insane. And Italy specifically, it's just beautiful. You turn, like Olivia said, you turn any corner, and there's just a new like monument, or just something of like such historical significance that it's just crazy to be there. Yeah, the food was amazing. It was, it was so good. Every night, it was like eating at a five-star restaurant. It was probably some of the best food I've had in my life. And I think my biggest takeaway was everyone on the trip became a lot closer. Like, in a couple of these pictures, there's a kid, Nick Carney. I didn't know him before this trip, and now he's probably one of my closest friends. Like, everyone just became so close on this, and I'd say that was probably my favorite part of it.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you again. We appreciate the opportunity to go, and we look forward to doing it again in a couple of years.
Yeah, thank you for coming and sharing your experiences with us. It's always nice to, I mean, we make decisions like that and allowing stuff like that, but you never really get to hear the results. So I always like to have people come back, no matter what it is, whether it's a field trip, like something like that, or go into, like, they have the science, the science one that kids go to Woods Hole. I like having stuff like that, because like, okay, it's a thing, we read about it, and we sign off on it, but it's, you wonder how it is for all of you to go, you know, and hear the experiences. So thank you for coming back and kind of sharing it with us. We're now going to move on.
Can I just add on to that briefly?
Any questions or comments? Yeah.
No, just in terms of comment, teaching ancient history, we are studying Rome right now, our fourth term, so the students are going over it. And so I'm seeing what you guys experience, and just what I'd like to note is, you know, with the thousands of miles that you traveled and the sights that you saw, we know that a lot of preparation goes into an experience like this. I mean, it's wonderful for us to see this slideshow and you guys to give. So for the advisors and then the students themselves, this idea was hatched months, if not years ago, and so for you to bring it to fruition and then have that within you, you're bringing this back to the Cape and Islands, like you have it in your heart because you've actually experienced it, whereas I myself, you know, I talk about it, but you guys have experienced, so it's just tremendous for yourself and then what you're adding to our school culture, based on your life experience. So tremendous, well done.
Anybody else?
As a fellow teacher, I'd like to thank the chaperones, because I know that, you know, the listening public may think, oh, they just had this wonderful, great trip out to wherever it is. Well, I've chaperoned ski trips, I've done overnight DECA trips, and believe me, it's, you're working. You've got your eyes out at all times. You're putting tape on doors, making sure kids aren't sneaking out, you're, I mean, it's, it's, you're working, so, and you're not getting paid overtime, that's for sure. You're not getting paid at all, but what you do get is you build a new relationship with students, and you share your love and passion. So I want to thank you guys truly for putting in your own free time, your own vacation, to do this. I mean, there's a lot of parents out there who wouldn't do it for overtime pay, and you guys are out there doing it for nothing, so thank you so much again.
Anybody else, Kathy?
I just want to thank everybody for coming and reporting. It's nice to hear about your adventure, and I want to second what Joe said. I had planned to thank the teachers who chaperoned and the other staff. It shows your dedication to our students, and I'm sure they'll never forget you. They will always remember this.
The other big thing about this is we, we approved this, I forget when we approved it, probably February, January, February, I think. Was it November? Was it that long ago? Wow. And this kind of represents something for the Barnstable School District as far as these, and then we did another trip to France, France, right? France, and that was February vacation. Those are the two first trips coming back after COVID. So we, it was, this is trying to get back to normalcy. I mean, we all experienced it, but for Barnstable School District, these were the first two international trips that we've done since before COVID. So that was kind of a big step for the school department, and safety and all of that was for getting it back up and working, so, but thank you to the staff who kind of made sure it happened. I appreciate that, and kept calling me and asking me, and yep, but you know what? It happened, and it's great. So thank you for coming and talking about it. Now we will move on to 2.2, National Latin Exam Awards. So I'll ask those folks to come forward. I'll ask the advisors or the teachers to come forward, and then you can, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and hopefully you'll be seeing some of the students I'm going to call up in a couple of years on their own Italy trip, right? That's the idea. All right, well, good evening, and salve te omne, as the Romans would say. I'm Victoria McCloskey. I've been in front of you many times, including in November, and of course, Ms. Gray. And this past March, as usual, approximately 100 and change of our students in Latin took the National Latin Exam, as they do. A rigorous standardized test, which tests their vocabulary, their grammar, their knowledge of history, and mythology, and culture. And of that group, a large number has won some sort of recognition for their performance. And I want to give you some context here, because I come and I give these awards every year, but sometimes there's not enough context, I think. I was looking back at my notes, and I want to say something, that in our classes, we encourage every single one of our students to seize this opportunity to take the exam and to show off what they've learned. And I want to contrast that. I mean, a high percentage of them do, but like an exam school, like Boston Latin School, also gives the National Latin Exam, but every teacher in a Latin class is designated to give over only three spots to their top highest achieving students, who are then allowed to take the Latin exam. So the, as you can see, a high score on this test is indicative of real performances is really quite impressive. And so these are awards that belong on college applications, all right? And in fact, this year, Brown changed their application, and there's a special spot for the National Latin Exam on the Brown College Application. So I just wanted to give a little bit of context there, so you could appreciate it a little bit more. And of course, I want to call the names of those students who had those scores and have them come up and receive their awards, and of course, to remain standing in the horseshoe here, as Mr. Jeff said, right? We're going to start off with, think of this as the honorable mention, the cum laude awards, and we'll start with Latin 1, and receiving a cum laude award is Moses Winslow. And also Landon Beaufort. In Latin 3, we also had a cum laude award for Jack Bertling. I don't believe he's here this evening. We're going to move on to the bronze medal. These are magna cum laude awards, and in Latin 1, we have quite a large group here. First is Parker Hegarty Cook. Haley Voravan. Caroline Cogswell. Amalia Thompson. And I'm not sure these students are here. Julia Silva, Ray, yes, Julia Silva? No? Ray Sharon. Derek Mooney. And Starla Bliss. Now, I have not seen Nathan, so I don't believe, yes, in Latin 2, also receiving a magna cum laude is Nathan Gregoire, and we, who could not be here. But we do have some Latin 3 students with bronze medals, and those are Addison Breen. And Camille Rodriguez. Congratulations, congratulations. Now, we will move on to our medals. The first is the maximum cum laude, with greatest honor, with greatest honor. In Latin 1, we do have a couple of silver medal winners, and so, yes, Ms. Gray will hang these around your neck. Yes, she will, because this is what brings me joy. We're going to do this. Now just hand them out, right? Got to make them wear them. That's right.
I'll hold these.
That's right.
We'll make a team.
Team effort, team effort. Team Italy. All right, in Latin 1 with a silver medal, congratulations to Simon Richardson and Madison They may not be able to be with us today, but I know I did. It's because I tell them, you're going to have to wear those. In Latin 2, though, we also have a silver medal winner, and that's Henry Richardson. He's here. Here comes Henry. Here comes Henry. I know the Latin 3 student with the silver medal is here because he spoke to you about Italy. It's Will Penny. And also in AP Latin Plus, I want to call it AP, it's independent study, but still taking the National Latin Exam at the fifth level, is Nick Lyons. Congratulations. And we do have also two gold medal winners. At the first level, I'm not sure about the first of this, but two gold, two gold medal winners in Latin 1, we have Julia Viera. And Wyatt Del Negro. I look forward to many gold medals from those students going forward, and I think it might be picture time, people. I think it might be picture time. You know the parents, they love that. That's right. Oh, look at them. That's right. That's what I'm talking about. It's picture time.
Do you want to swap the seal?
Shall we? I don't.
Is that why you get the town seal?
We're doing a great job. They're doing a great job.
They actually look perfect. They even light this and like they go to.
Stay up.
Doing great.
Thank you for everything you've done for my kids.
All right.
So much for it.
I love it.
You guys are a smart family.
So much.
We listen to the sound of it.
That's my sister.
Good stuff, good stuff.
Good picture?
Did you get a good picture?
Okay, are we good?
Okay, everybody gets to leave except for Nick. All right. Okay, congratulations, you guys. You can return to your seat, except for Nick. That's right, Nick, move over a little bit. Sorry, I'm making Nick stand here. I always, I always pick on someone at the end. Nick Lyons can't leave. I just wanted you to know as well that the National Greek Exam also took place in March, right? Unfortunately, because we're doing this a little bit earlier, we usually give the National Latin Exam Awards in June, and it's May, the results on this very small and bespoke test are not in yet, right? Not quite in. But I want, I want to tell you something else about Nick, because as president of the Barnstable Junior Classical League Chapter, he led a group of nine students to third place in the state this past Saturday. This is an unprecedented achievement. Never have we scored so highly in the state rankings, besting 12 other Massachusetts schools in a combination of academic, athletic, and artistic competitions, everything from impromptu art and gladiatorial games to chariot racing, and yes, he and his brother built the chariot, all right? So even with his help, Barnstable Latin student Asaf Afonso was elected to the State Board of Officers as technical coordinator. So his legacy as a JCLer and a longtime test taker is now secure, and I wanted you to know that before he got to leave, so, all right. Congratulations, Nick. Congratulations.
You can leave now.
Thank you, guys, again.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and congratulations to all the students for all your accomplishments. I mean, it's amazing, every year, like I said before with the other ones, this is like, as a school committee member, I always say it's the adult side, which is the meetings and stuff, and then there's being able to go into the schools and like, and like being with the kids and like learning about what they're doing and stuff like that. And for me, and I know for all of us, this is kind of the cool part of the job, is like you get to see all of our students and our kids, what they're accomplishing. That's like the cool part of being on the school committee, is you get included in all this stuff. But congratulations, everybody, and thank you to the families for all the support that you give to your, to your kids, and just coming tonight at 5:30 on a Wednesday shows it. So, but thank you, and we'll stop the meeting at this point and allow everybody to... Oh, very quick. Sorry, I keep saying it again.
I just want to say how much I admire and respect your achievements in studying Latin. Very quick, here's my experience with Latin. Many years ago, the Catholic Mass was in Latin, that's how old I am, and I studied to be an altar boy. I think you had six months to a year to prepare, to respond to the priest who spoke in Latin. And I lasted one Mass, because he'd say something dumb in his phobiscum, and I'd say, ugh. And that was my experience with Latin, and so my hat's off to you. I greatly admire your achievements.
And I'd just like to say to you guys, also in Latin, in the Latin program, how important it is. In our house, all of my children took Latin, went through, and I just wanted just a quick story about my daughter, who's graduated since graduated. She's at the Coast Guard Academy, but she was coming home from something after school one time, and she was in the backseat chit-chatting with one of her friends about, you know, oh, this group, oh, they're the cool, they're the cool girls, oh, they're the party girls, and this group, oh, those are the soccer girls, those are whatever girls, and so I'm sitting there, I'm like, well, what, what, what group are you in? She goes, JCL, Latin Club, baby. So I'm so glad to see you guys, that JCL Latin Club, baby, is still going on. So that's awesome, because she is one of the coolest people I've ever met in my life. So way to go, JCL, keep it up. Thanks.
Yeah, and just for me, outstanding, you know, tremendous ranking in tournaments that we have not previously placed in, but it was noted that, you know, this distinction has been included on certain college entrance exams, you know, and so it's tremendous, you know, you're gaining experience, but there's, you know, the applications for this may seem nuanced, to Peter's point, you know, you can understand, you know, a mass, you know, an old, ancient or historic mass, but how it's going to factor in to your college placement and to your future endeavors, along with these current achievements, is very promising.
I'll keep it short and just say congratulations, and thank you to the faculty who have prepared these students so well.
Excellent. With that, I will now, everybody can leave if you feel like leaving. Thank you for coming. [applause] Okay. I think everybody's gone, so I will now move on to 3.1, Approve Advisory Committee, Advisory Committee on School Culture and Climate Meeting Minutes for February 27, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes, or Advisory Committee on School Culture and Climate Meeting Minutes for February 27, 2023.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion and seconded, any conversation?
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at the meeting, the minutes here, and I just want to, if you guys did get the peruse through, I just want you to see that at that meeting, it was unanimous support for adjusting these vision statement of that subcommittee. So I just want to make sure everyone makes note of that, that it wasn't, that that was pretty much what our committee was, wanted to do, and we're hoping, we're hoping that we could get that as an agenda item for this committee.
Are there any corrections or changes within the minutes?
Nope, I'm just making sure everyone...
Okay. So I have a motion and seconded.
Recognizes that.
I have a motion and seconded. Is a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.2.
Move to approve Final Advisory Committee on School Culture and Climate Meeting Minutes, March 27, 2023.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Having a motion and seconded. Any questions or deletions or changes?
Nope.
Seeing none? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.3, Approve School Committee Meeting Minutes for March 15, 2023.
Move to approve School Committee Meeting Minutes of March 15, 2023.
I'll second.
Having a motion and seconded. Any questions or changes? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 3.4, Approve School Committee Meeting Workshop. Wait a minute, let me try that again. Approve School Committee Workshop Meeting Minutes for April 5, 2023.
Move to approve School Committee Workshop Meeting Minutes, April 5, 2023.
Second.
Having a motion and seconded. Any corrections, deletions, or changes? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.7, Student Envoy Report. Welcome.
Hello. How is everyone doing tonight?
Excellent. Well, I'll let you do your report first, then we'll have a conversation.
Oh, sounds awesome. Okay, first off, Barnstable High School held their annual art and fashion show last Friday. Students across all grades presented their works to family and friends. I went, it was amazing to see, the seniors were able to show their portfolios, they concentrated on different topics, and, you know, it was awesome to see all their hard work paying off. Last night, the NHS held their induction, they added 60 new members. Applications for Mu Alpha Theta are due June 9. Just to refresh, Mu Alpha Theta, or Math Honor Society, is an organization that runs tutoring labs, math competitions, and offers scholarships to senior members. This is a great opportunity for rising juniors and seniors. This Friday, there will be a talent show run by the class of 2025 and 2026. BHS's Got Talent is a promising night of bonding for BHS students as they appreciate their classmates' abilities. The Barnstable Youth Commission is running their annual youth summit event for 7th graders at BIS on May 19, where students will learn about different extracurricular and academic opportunities available at BHS, and DECA will be...
Approve School Committee Meeting Workshop. Wait a minute, let me try that again. Approve School Committee Workshop Meeting Minutes for April 5, 2023.
Move to approve School Committee Workshop Meeting Minutes, April 5, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion and seconded. Voice, any changes, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 3.6. Approve School Committee Workshop Meeting... I did the same thing again. Approve School Committee Workshop Meeting Minutes...
Nope, nope.
Approve School Committee Workshop Meeting Minutes for April 12, 2023. Can I get a...
Yes, I'll second that.
I haven't got a motion.
Move to approve School Committee Workshop Meeting Minutes of April 12, 2023.
Now I'll second it.
Have a motion and seconded. Any changes, deletion, or corrections?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Now moving...
You skipped one.
Oh, I moved, I skipped one?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll go back to 3.5. Approve School Committee Meeting Minutes for April 5, 2023.
Move to approve School Committee Meeting Minutes of April 5, 2023.
I'll second.
Have a motion and seconded. Any corrections, deletions, or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.7. Student Envoy Report. Welcome.
Hello. How is everyone doing tonight?
Excellent. Well, I'll let you do your report first, then we'll have a conversation.
Oh, sounds awesome. Okay, first off, Barnstable High School held their annual art and fashion show last Friday. Students across all grades presented their works to family and friends. I went, it was amazing to see the seniors were able to show their portfolios. They concentrated on different topics and, you know, it was awesome to see all their hard work paying off. Last night, the NHS held their induction, they added 60 new members. Applications for Mu Alpha Theta are due June 9th. Just to refresh, Mu Alpha Theta, or Math Honor Society, is an organization that runs tutoring labs, math competitions, and offers scholarships to senior members. This is a great opportunity for rising juniors and seniors. This Friday, there will be a talent show run by the class of 2025 and 2026. BHS's Got Talent is a promising night of bonding for BHS students as they appreciate their classmates' abilities. The Barnstable Youth Commission is running their annual youth summit event for 7th graders at BIS on May 19th, where students will learn about different extracurricular and academic opportunities available at BHS. And DECA will be holding their new DECA Dash of 5K starting at the Austervale Library on May 20th at 8:00 AM. DECA wants you, all of you, to come run like a boss.
Seniors will have their prom on May 26th at the Cape Cod Resort and Conference Center from 6:00 to 11:00 PM. The after-prom will be held at the BHS Fieldhouse from 11:00 to 5:00 AM with many healthy school activities. Graduation is going to be held on June 3 at Barnstable High School, and seniors are very excited to move on to better opportunities next year.
Sheri and I also just wanted to say, because this is our last meeting, we wanted to thank all of the members of the school committee for their attention during our monthly envoy reports, their reassurance during our first month's speaking as representatives of the high school, and their appreciation for student success and learning opportunities at Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll open up to any school committee members. Any questions, comments?
I'd just say you two have been terrific. Thank you.
Very kind.
Andre.
I just want to say, well done. It goes by fast, you being here over the last two years, but the point of fact is, you're moving on to bigger and better things, and we hope to see you in the future coming back to check in with us and also to support the students behind you that are looking to do similarly outstanding work.
We were running it through our heads, wondering if we should have the student envoy sit for the entire meeting. I wanted to know if...
Wow.
Try tap dancing if you'd like.
Oh, okay, all right. No, I just, but thank you guys. You guys did fantastic job. It takes a lot of guts to get up there, so way to go. You guys did fantastic.
And I want to thank you for volunteering, and Lucy, you need to tell your sister I'm sorry for the number of times I approached her at Mass and told her how wonderful she did at school.
Will do.
Lucy's a twin, and I'm not a people person. But so you never heard it, I'm sure she went right home and said, "You did a great job." But thank you, and maybe we'll hear you at public comment someday next year.
Probably.
Well, thank you. Like I said a couple of months ago, I remember when you both came to that first meeting, we were in the library, and I remember meeting you over by the stairs, and you were like, "What do we talk about?" And I'm like, "Just take a deep breath, like, look at me for the first couple of meetings until you kind of get it," and I'll kind of nod and kind of, but you two have gone way above and beyond whatever, like, it was all you, but phenomenal job for the last two years, phenomenal job. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for keeping us updated, having high school students. I know what's going on as a parent, and you have, you have told us exactly, told the other members who didn't have kids exactly what was going on. So you know what? You've done your job spectacularly. I honestly can't say it enough, and thank you for everything you've done for the students of Barnstable High School, because it wasn't just the two of you, you were representing, what do we have, 1,800 kids there? And you represented them extremely well to the school committee. So be very proud of what you've accomplished in the last two years, and good luck with college next year. Good luck with everything, and hopefully, don't be a stranger. Stop by and say hi once in a while. But thank you, and have a good night.
It's very kind. Thank you so much. Oh, can I have this?
Yeah, Jen said, yeah, take the blue part and leave...
I'm going to hang this in my freshman dorm.
Have a good night. We'll see you at graduation. Yeah, yeah. Okay, we're now going to move on to public comment. 3.8. Public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will allow, also allow, public comment at his discretion during the meeting. So let me just get my, so I will be opening up public comment. If there's anybody for public comment, you can come up to the podium. Let me see. Six, so, so I now open up public comment. So if you could just give us your name?
Sure. Hi, my name is April.
Okay. Jen, do you need the last name? Yeah, last name too, please.
Do I have to give you my last name?
Yeah, name and village you live in.
Okay, April and Barnstable. I'll just say Barnstable.
April, so you're going to have three minutes.
Yeah. This year, a group called the Ally Group gave a donation of close to 400 books to the innocent 5th graders in Barnstable. I'd like to read you a post from the Facebook page of that group that donated these books to these innocent children. Here is the secret to universal indoctrination. Professors aren't doing it. Your little darlings are finally meeting a diverse group, realizing that the stereotypes that you've been feeding them are close-minded garbage. Yes, that is a mean-spirited, inaccurate, and maybe racist post that is against parents put up by those who are allowed to send your 5th graders books. Does this sound like somebody you want in charge of the materials that your child is provided with? Well, a staff member told me that the Barnstable Ally Facebook page is actually run by teachers in the Barnstable School. Not only that, but the Facebook page also had photos of criminals and drug dealers on it. 400 books, nobody checked, from a group that apparently disrespects parents and supports criminals. The super told me the librarians reviewed the titles. The titles, not good enough. The fact of the matter is, those books could have contained the worst things possible that you could imagine your child being exposed to, and that's the point. Schools are supposed to be protecting our children, and that right there is a classic example of a major failure to do so. The town of Barnstable is highly religious community, and from the photos displayed on the schools, on the school's social media of the books that were donated, there was a large portion of those books that would have directly gone against the religious views of many families. So the question is, what policies were previously in place that were ignored before these books were donated to protect our children from outside agenda of strangers? And what policies will we put in place to ensure that it doesn't happen again? Anyone who is donating to students should be thoroughly investigated, materials thoroughly examined. Additionally, a petition is circling to ask the school committee superintendents and principals to come together to eliminate scholastic book fairs from the Barnstable schools. Parents and teachers all over the United States have been in discussion of this petition, unhappy with the book themes. A teacher contacted me recently, saying she removed 50 titles from her school fair because they were absolutely inappropriate.
You have 30 seconds.
Books on curses, murder, sex, witchcraft, covers with small children with their faces melted off of the books. Books where children are pretending, books pretending that they're about pets when they're really about sexual subjects. Parents are looking to you to help solve these problems. Another petition we're receiving, which is circulating all of Massachusetts, is also on school committees asking people for their personal information. A man in Plymouth had his life threatened after he went to a school committee meeting. Someone with an alternative view threatened him by way of using the information that he provided in order to speak at that meeting. Had he not given that information, he probably would not have been contacted.
Okay, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Please come on up. Hi. If you could just give us your name and what village?
Absolutely. Hi, Kim Dunn, Hyannis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
First, I do want to acknowledge that our schools, principals, teachers, and the student resource officers do care about the safety of everyone. My concern and the reason I'm here today is the lack of communication on incidents that happened, and I have a couple examples. On March 24th, four schools were closed, kept, were kept indoors for a community-based situation. Very vague email. I got more information that from Hyannis News than I did from the school. I'm glad the police were very much in charge and everything was fine, but the email was just too vague for incidents that are going on. March 11th. Violence in school. A lot of parents can share stories of bullying. What's frustrating is schools rarely give details on how things are handled. Recently, a dear friend, her child, was lured into a bathroom by his bully's friend, where the bully was waiting with a knife. Now, this, I know SRO was involved, the child was removed, and while it was being investigated, my friend was told that he would be suspended, not given an amount of time. Yet he was let back in the next day in general population to take the MCAS. How do you think the kid that was being bullied and threatened felt? And my friend didn't even find out till the end of the day. And the big one. March 14th. The Day of Silence. I was thrilled to be here earlier to see, I know there are so many wonderful clubs, and I'm glad, all kids deserve support, and I love that the community's behind them. However, again, another vague email on something that could have been an incident. The school claims it was student-led, but explained to me why it was on the BPS official webpage halfway through the day, and then just a little bit further with pictures at the end of the day. I first have to say, this was so in extremely poor taste, given what happened at the Nashville shooting at the beginning of the month. It just seemed really disrespectful. Can you not see how it could be divisive? They were given a choice of two different colored tapes to wear. I get supporting the students, but what about the students that don't want to participate? I can see how that they would be ostracized because of religious reasons or just not wanting to take a political stance. Now, when I called the superintendent...
You have about 30 seconds, just to let you know.
I'm thankful that I was able to follow through with a principal from one school, or vice-principal from one school, and the principal from another. The tape was a concern. I know it was a non-incident, but in today's world, we're seeing a lot of activists, Audrey Hale, for example, and things are becoming political. I just want to say that politics and any flag other than the United States flag don't belong in our schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing nobody, we have one more chance. Yeah, come on down. Come on up. If you could just give your name and what village?
Michelle Sterling from Centerville.
Okay, welcome.
I just want to say, I so support this lady. I have four grandchildren, and I hope that they don't have to be subjected to this, you know, LGBTQ and all this other stuff. It's fine to be that way if that's what you are, but I don't think it should be shoved down their throats. I see all these things coming home from school. I've gone, I've done a library search with a group that I belong to about questionable books. I'm sure they're in the schools, but I know they're in the libraries, and first of all, they are pornographic, they should not be in any school. I have an eight-year-old who can read anything in the school, and I said to her mother, "You need to watch out. It's really sad when you have to go into a library and look at the books before you can take them out." I have four grandkids, they're 10, 8, 3, and almost 4. And to have to take these things home, one of them said in the library, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" And then on the outside, it said, "Are you a boy or are you a girl?" And it said, "When you, when you're born, the doctor guesses as to what you are, a boy or a girl." Have any of you, I know you all have kids, or most of you do, have you ever been surrounded by this kind of thing in your whole life? I know your kids weren't subjected to it, because I know you quite well. I don't know the rest of you at all, really, but this world is changing, and you need to be on your toes as to what is going to be allowed and what isn't going to be allowed. Take a walk through Centerville Library someday. Take a walk through your, you know, through any school library. Sandwich, you know, sandwich is not any better. I've done a whole study of all kinds of books, and there were 852 books on the Cape that were questionable, and they were how to groom these kids to transgender. I don't think that should be allowed in the school library. Sex education starts at home, not in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Give one more chance. Seeing nobody. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Sure? Yeah? Okay. I just want to make sure. Everybody's all set? Okay. I will close public comment. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. We'll now move on to 3.9. School Committee Comments and Subcommittee Liaison Reports. I'll open that up.
Yeah, very quick. It seems like we've been meeting a lot every week or so between our regular meetings, committee meetings, so I don't have much tonight except for congratulations to the BHS students who were inducted into membership of the National Honor Society last night. It was a pleasure to attend and see most, and meet such fine scholars, all who met the National Honor Society's high standards of scholarship, service, leadership, and character. I say congrats to all. And I was supposed to take a tour of Hyannis West today with Ms. McCarty, who invited me to observe the overcrowding situations, but a conflict in my schedule came up, and I hope to reschedule later in May. And finally, I got quite a lot of input and feedback from our staff, especially at the high school, about our new social media policy that I'll share later in the evening when the agenda item comes up.
Andre or Joe, anything for comments?
Yeah, so I didn't, we had our final, our final climate and culture committee meeting after this committee voted to end that with a 2-2 vote. And it was nice to just thank all of the members of the climate and the climate and culture subcommittee for all of the time that they put in, and I thought that that was just a wonderful, a wonderful group of people to listen to, and I just want them to know that I really appreciated all the time that they put in and all the work that they put in, sharing their stories with us every month, giving us a feel for what was happening in the committee. And again, just want to chime in, the, I think that as a committee, we may want to revisit the way that we get things on our agenda. I think the process now is, we, as school committee members, if there's something of interest from my subcommittee, if the public wants to know how it goes, is I send an email to Mike, and I ask him if he can put it, or whoever the, whoever the president or the, sorry, the chair is of the committee, you send them, and if they give you a thumbs up or thumbs down, that's how things get on the agenda. So it's not as a committee, it's just whoever's sitting in that chair position has control over the agenda. And I don't know if that's quite committee-like, because I know that from the trainings that I took, we're all supposed to pretty much have equal voice. I know other school committees have times during their committee meetings where they can bring up ideas or things that they want to have on the agenda. So I know that, for instance, if you notice in those meetings, the subcommittee, our subcommittee certainly wanted us to have at least a discussion at this table about slightly adjusting the school vision, and then we could have had that discussion here, but that was not, as I asked for that to get on the agenda, and it did not. So maybe as a committee, we should think about how we get things on the committee, how we get things on the agenda so that we can, the public can hear our voices, that's all, in a organized way.
Kathy or Andre?
So, school culture policy on subcommittee met on April 14th. We worked on the four policies that are on the agenda later tonight, and we continued working in Section J. We also made a decision to, that will be on the agenda later, to formally approve the sections that have been completed and already approved in form so that they can be implemented. Could you please start my thing? I just, very quickly, I went for a visit to BCIS. I mentioned it at the workshop, or at the special school committee meeting that we had, and I went to BCIS to take a look at their space situation that most of us are trying to get to these schools so that we can make decisions on how to fit all the children in well. And while I was in there, there were some brand-new murals that were very eye-catching, painted on the walls. So the art teacher, Jen Gardner, instead of taking her prep period and prepping, she saves that for home, she has started painting these murals and you'll see from the quick photos that she has all the students that are interested in helping involved as well. So that caught my eye. As you know, these buildings are quite old and some of them don't have much color to them, but that school is coming alive and it was really fun to walk through and, and see that happening. So thank you to Jen Gardner for taking the initiative to do that. And I'm sure there's a lot going on in all the other schools as well and hopefully I'll, I'll get into them soon.
Is that it? Yeah, you're all set? Okay. Excellent.
I forgot to say, the regular subcommittee meeting for policy revision, instead of being the second Friday, it's moved to May 19th, I think it's the 19th, at 1 o'clock via Zoom. So Friday, May 19th, 1 o'clock via Zoom.
Okay. And I got for senior parents, we got an, we all got an email from BHS on 4/25, so a couple of weeks ago. And it was, the title of it was Class of 2023 Important Senior Dates. So I, if you haven't looked at it, it has all kinds of information from when grades close to when kids have to turn stuff back in, like books and all of that stuff. Senior obligations, May 25th, 2:00 p.m. They have to turn back in all of your stuff. Chromebooks have to be turned in by the 26th of, of May. And this all has to do with if you don't turn them back in, then your, the kids can't walk at graduation. So there's some really important stuff in this, so I would suggest it also has, and I know the seniors got it too, but it has a graduation rehearsal times and stuff. And I remind everybody, so graduation is June 3rd at 9:00 a.m. And the gates will open at 7:30 a.m. And seniors need to be at BHS at 7:00 a.m. Another question I keep getting, I'll just read it right here. Each senior will get four lawn tickets, floor, four bleacher tickets, and two rain date tickets. So that's, I know I've had a lot of people ask me, how many tickets are we getting? So you're getting four lawn tickets and four bleacher tickets. So that answers that. Other than that, like I said, I would suggest parents just go back through their emails and stuff and look at, it came in on 4/25 and it is Class of 23 Important Senior Dates because there's a lot of stuff in there. Other than that, that's, I think, all I have.
Mike, I just want to.
Oh, yeah.
Will I do my slides now or?
Oh, yeah, do you want to do them? I didn't know if you had them.
Yes, I.
Yeah, you got them? Okay, sorry, sorry about that, Andrea.
No problem. Yeah, so, thanks so much, Mo. You know, we are a large, diverse, and dynamic district, so there's plenty of good things, plenty of opportunities that we have on a monthly basis. So this is Ms. Noreen's kindergarten class. They presented a poetry cafe. Next slide. Okay, so the students engaging in poetry. We, we had the students that are scoring well on exams and, and doing things, but this is where it all begins. This is the stars of tomorrow, today. And so they had the, the poetry cafe. Next slide. Okay, and so you got a chance to see who a member of the cast was and what they were, what they were doing. So this is Ms. Noreen's kindergarten class. Ms. Noreen's kindergarten class, thank you, next slide. Over at BUES, this was Wet Fest, Cape Cod's Educational Water Festival, that Ms. Ray's and Ms. Batson Heath's superstars participated. And this is one student that's participating in the bubble room, which was one component. Thank you, next slide. Okay, there were activities in the gymnasium, arts, craft, the like for students. I'm not very artistically inclined, so I always have a deep respect and appreciation. I can talk for a while, but in terms of my vocational skills, they are, they're lacking. So the students got involved in some arts and crafts. Next slide. And then the students also went to the Wellfleet Bay Wildlife Sanctuary for a visit, you know, so a combination of things, in-house, in the community. This was the Educational Water Festival program over at BUES. Thank you, next slide. At Barnstable Intermediate School, we want to thank the District Attorney's Office that presented an informative presentation on cyber communication. And so I saw this presentation, I work at Sandwich Middle High School, and so they, they came and I can just say, very informative, helpful, and impactful in terms of what is out there in that digital space, which of course is, is vast. And a lot of things I didn't know. And so this cyber communication workshop done by the Barnstable District Attorney's Office and in conjunction with the Barnstable County Sheriff Youth Program and with our Barnstable Police SROs, this was at the intermediate school. And I, it's, it's important and, and it's necessary at the intermediate grades, at the high school grades, and then even beyond. You know, we spend so much of our time in, in the digital space that we need to be aware of all the things that are going on and the impact, the impact of, of those things. And one of the things that I learned, you know, is four letters that, that are very important and that we need to be mindful of, S-E-N-D, send. Okay, think before, think before you, you go ahead and send that information out into that vast digital space. Thank you, next slide. This is the Marine Biology and Environmental Club at the high school. They went to Provincetown in conjunction with the Center for Coastal Studies. Again, the marine biology and environmental program at the high school. Next slide. They took part in the Atlantic Shark, Atlantic White Shark Conservatory. So that was one component of their visit. Myself, I'm a land lover, decidedly so, because I saw jaws, too young of an age, too young of an age. And I, and that's, I'm not proud of that, but I am not somebody that has sea legs, you know, or is good on the, out there in the ocean and maybe I should improve as we live in a maritime community, but this is what the students were participating in. Next slide. Okay, and they also had live, you know, full whales, you know, the different animals, so you can see it again in person. This was at the Provincetown Center for Coastal Studies at the high school. Next slide. This was last night. I was thrilled to see in the community, it's our National Honors Society induction, as was noted, 16 new members participated. And it was just tremendous, the community support feedback that I was just seeing on social media. So those are some of our new members. Next slide. District Attorney Rob Gallis was the, the guest speaker at the event for those, those incoming members to our National Honors Society. So that was, that was good to see. Next slide. And again, 16 new members. I wish, I know that it was originally scheduled to be in April, they moved it to May. I know that a number of, of you guys were there and it was just out of this world, the National Honors Society induction. Next slide. As was alluded, the fashion show at the high school took place, was just tremendous. Oh, you can go through the next four, give it some time. Our students, different portfolios, styles, we know that they, they have it in them, they have the ideas, and they go out into display what they were doing. It's just tremendous. Oh, yes, that thing. So that's the, the fashion show, those four students over at the high school. Thank you, Mo. Wonderful. Okay, so also yesterday, it was an action-packed day. We had the Barnstable Unified Track and Field Team participate in a try meet. It was Barnstable, Sandwich, and also Monomoy. So as I was leaving school, I saw the students from Sandwich, they were excited, they were getting, who are you playing Barnstable? Okay, all right, go get them, but not too much, not too much, not too much, you know, make sure you take it easy, you know, so, because I'm.
That's, that's going to be a complex issue right there. Do good, but not too good?
Not too good.
So my question is, where was your loyalty, Andrea?
You know, it was most certainly, you know, I'm going to say, most certainly with all the students, all the students that, that participated. Next slide, Mo. And so, you know, track and field, getting out there, the races, the different competitions. Next slide. And then it was just great, you know, this program, we, we had basketball in the early days in the fall, and now the Unified Track Program. It's just been wonderful, the student support, you know, you know, Steve Santi's our athletic director, getting this information out into the community. It, it's just, it's been great and we want to see it, we want to see it more and more. Next slide. Okay, that's, I did, I added, but that's okay. I just want to add on to what you had said, Kathy. I was at the service for John Reed on Saturday and I just, it, it was powerful, just in terms of the community members that came out, the, the spectrum of people that participated. It was noted, a number of our public servants were there, a number of individuals in education, whether it be the, the MTA, past superintendents, community members. So Mr. John Reed started his career in education here in Barnstable, 1973, 40 years in terms of education and then the different things that he did within the community. I thought the service was well-done and it was fitting for somebody that's had a tremendous impact on this community and education in the state and then, and then beyond that. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Andrea. Excellent job. Okay, we'll move on to 3.10 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Andrea, your pictures are always a tough act to follow.
Have him go first, do you think? Would that be better? But then it would make all of us look bad. So you know what? Sorry, Sarah.
That's okay. I have a couple of updates for you and the community. In May, we have a couple of recognitions and acknowledgements this month. May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, as well as Jewish American Heritage Month. And we have, it's a very festive month in schools too, with Teacher Appreciation Week coming up next week. School Principals Day and Substitute Appreciation Day was May 1st, and thank you to them. School Lunch Hero Day is coming up at the end of the week. We also have School Nurse Day coming up and Speech and Language Pathologist, Pathologist's Day this month. But since we only have one school committee meeting, I'll recognize them now and thank them all for their contributions to our students. I just wanted to let the school committee know that Mr. Lambrose, Mr. Dwelly, and I will be at Town Council tomorrow evening. We will be presenting and seeking approval on the district's capital improvement plan projects that you had previously approved. So that is going to be tomorrow at 7:00. The district and high school vision of a graduate teams continue to meet and work on the development of our vision of a graduate, which is our community's consensus vision of essential skills our students will need to thrive in their futures and the focus for pre-K to 12 instructional experiences for all children here in Barnstable. We've synthesized the initial data from February, the Professional Development Day, to begin to assemble the common ideas together, and we thank you for your contributions at the school committee workshop on April 12th. We're hosting some family sessions. If families are watching, we would invite you to attend next week, either Tuesday, May 9th at 6:30 at the high school, or Thursday, May 11th over Zoom. We are eager and interested to share this process with you and gather your input related to these essential skills. There is a lot of data gathering happening among students and some of the high school students on the instructional visioning team have put together a video to share with their younger peers in order to gather input in grades three through seven. And we'll also be seeking family and community input on a draft through surveys. So there have been multiple ways for people to participate and I'm excited about the conversations that are shaping up. It's getting busy in terms of recruiting staff. We are continuing to update our postings for the 23-24 school year. And I want to thank Principal Kim White and Director of Elementary Special Education, Catherine Zinni, who are representing the Barnstable Public Schools in person tonight at the Bridgewater State Career Fair. So thanks to them, they sent a picture of their display and they're representing us very, very well. And an update on something that I had shared with you back in December. Governor Healy hosted a special workshop for athletic departments on addressing hate and bias in school sports. And I had indicated that they would be doing some follow-up regional sessions later this school year. Liz Friedman, Steve Santi's, and I will be attending May 12th and May 13th, two full-day workshops at MIAA to follow up on the initial workshop in December, where I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to talk more specifically about action steps here in Barnstable. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Okay, we'll now move on to 3.11 Assistant Superintendent's Report. Kristen?
Thank you. So I have two items tonight. One is kind of my running update on our GLEAM grant. So as I will again share, that GLEAM stands for Growing Literacy Equity Across Massachusetts. We awarded that grant a few months of, a few months ago. It has three main components, the comprehensive systems analysis, which will lead us into field testing and piloting of new curricular materials, and then the implementation phase of the selected high-quality instructional materials. So we are currently engaging with our consultants from TNTP, the New Teacher, oh, I knew I'd forget the P. The New Teacher. Thank you. Project. In the first phase of the grant, which is the systems analysis process. So in addition to digging into and reviewing our curriculum documents, our various processes and practices related to curriculum review and professional development, a critical piece of the system analysis is the site, is site visits that are conducted with our consultants. So these site visits have been taking place this week. Our consultant arrived Tuesday, Monday? I don't know what day of the week it is, it must have been Monday. And we started our site visit yesterday, starting at Centerville and Hyannis West. Today, we were at Barnstable United Elementary and tomorrow is BWB and West Villages. And they, each of these visits starts with a kickoff meeting to kind of lay the groundwork, review the tool. It's really to kind of ground the work. From there, the classroom visits take place, there's three. There's the consultant, a school representative, and a district representative going in to visit the classrooms, so we're trying not to be disruptive. Just again, get the lay of the land. We also have, the consultants are meeting with a student focus group. The reading specialist from each school sits in on that. And then we debrief at the end of the visit. I did not have the opportunity to participate yesterday, but I did at the beginning, the bookends of that. And it is just, so the organization, the structure, the information, it really is, I'm really excited for the work ahead. So we will, like I said, wrap up tomorrow and in the week or so following the site visits, the consultants will be conducting focus groups with teachers, meeting virtually with our K5 principals. And this is all in an effort to better understand the current practices and dynamics related to literacy programming and instruction in the district. It's essentially, it's like a needs assessment. All staff will have the opportunity to contribute to the information gathering through a brief survey. And there will also be some parent forums, but those won't be scheduled to the, until the fall. The outcome of this work that's happening now will act as the foundation for all of the GLEAM work that will be taking place throughout the next several years. They want to make sure that they know where the bull's eye on the target is. They really want to make sure that they have all of the background around the district, around our literacy K5, so that as we move forward in the identification of those instructional resources that are really going to best fit our needs, it's not done blindfolded. They will have all of that information. So I will continue to update you as we progress. But again, I, I can't say enough about the consultants, their organizational structure, and I can't thank Carrie Morse enough, who you'll hear from later, just for her organization and really leading this work. And my second item is big news, our culinary department at the high school, the food trailer at BHS is permitted.
I heard about that yesterday.
It has been a long time coming. That food trailer appeared on the grounds of BHS through the funding of the Skills Capital Grant and generous donation by the Cobb Fund. And then COVID came. And that really stopped everything. And we've been in this recovery and then kind of recouping and where were we in the process, trying to pick up where we left off. But it is permitted, it is licensed, it is ready to go into action. They are planning for a soft opening, more details to be coming. But I just, and I, I'm sure I'll leave some people out, but I will try not to, but I just want to express my thanks and recognize the Herculean efforts of Principal Liz Friedman, Vanessa Pye, Robin Daw, Mike Lambrose. I heard that Joe Cologne saved the day on the day that it was permitted. It just really, it all came together and it was, it was truly Herculean to get that through. So I can't wait. I'm excited. And so there are plans.
I will single-handedly make sure they make a profit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? I would like to thank, my daughter is in the culinary arts and she, I know the ups and downs that the kids and the, and the staff have gone through, so thank you to everybody who pitched in, like Mike Lambrose and his crew. And, and I know there was a lot of stuff that you guys were doing behind the scenes and thank you very much for everything that, that you've done in your staff and just, like you said, all those people that really helped to get it to that point. And because it kind of was gonna, then it wasn't, and it's just unbelievable work by everybody to get it finally to pass the finish line, so thank you. Seeing nothing else, we will now move on to old business. 4.1, approve revised job description for the care coordinator nurse at the. 4.1, approve revised job description for the care coordinator nurse at the Family and Community Engagement Center. This is Sarah.
Thank you. So this is a request from Mary Beth Shea, Executive Director for SEL and Student Services, Alicia Bryant, our Director of Health Services, and Maura Bunshu. It's a current position that is grant-funded. We have grant funding again for next year. This position assists the Family Community Engagement Center in registering new students and is a critical liaison with respect to making sure that all of the required healthcare has either occurred or making connections in the community for families to seek out physicals and other things. So it's an important liaison to our school nurses as well. So there's a draft job description in your packet with some revisions highlighted in green. We think that, and have, are suggesting that this be a licensed practical nurse, primarily with the focus on supporting the registration process with multilingual fluencies preferred, and this would fall within the paraprofessional contract of the BTA, which was something that we added when we added an LPN at Centerville this year. I'm so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the revised job description for the care coordinator nurse at the Family and Community Engagement Center as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second. Having a motion and seconded, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose nay. Ayes have it unanimously. Welcome. Moving on to 5.1, presentation of the Gateway Program by Carrie Morse. Welcome. Welcome.
So I enjoyed, I believe it was the March school committee meeting where our Superintendent Sarah Hearn provided information, and there were some questions about Gateway. So I'm here. I do have a presentation, and I hopefully you have the packet as well. Within it, I'd like to bring your attention to the notes part, too. I'll be talking through, but I wanted to make sure that some of the pieces are here. Please feel free to stop me at any point and ask questions throughout, and hopefully what I'm providing to you will give you a little bit of context of how Gateway has evolved over the last several years and where we'd like it to continue to improve. So first and foremost, it's important to notice, I'm in charge of the slides. Andre, I can't say, just change the slide, Mo. I got it. So Gateway stands for Gifted and Talented Education with All Youth, and our mission is to support all students through talent development and to identify, challenge, and encourage academically advanced and creative learners. It's a program that's now over 30 years in our district, and we are, where it's not a mandated state for a gifted and talented program, we are really fortunate, and we thank you for the support that you've provided for this program for that many years. In my role as in Gateway, I started in 1997 as a stipended Gateway teacher. When my students went to, let's say, music, I would then take my prep time and teach students in Gateway. It evolved. In 2012, I took on a full-time position in the K-3 buildings, and each day went to a different building to provide services in Gateway for the K-3 buildings. In 2015, I was put into the placement of the Gateway Director. That was the year where we changed the Gifted and Talented Education with All Youth. It used to be Able Youth, and that is where we start to show that evolution and the improvement in Gateway. All youth is our goal, and so you'll see in this presentation how we have started to really develop that support for everyone in Barnstable. A lot of times I'd get the questions, how do I get my child in Gateway? And my response now is, all students in Barnstable are in Gateway. It's just how we support the student and support the abilities and interests. So there are three tiers. This mimics and aligns to the MTSS tiered system. So Tier 1 of Gateway would be for all students, and that is founded in interest enrichment. So I'll give you an example. In 5th grade, we had a student this year that was recommended by a teacher, and that student had an extreme interest in art. Now, we have art classes, but it went beyond that. So in this recommendation, we took it upon ourselves, the Gateway teacher met with the student, met with the teacher, and came up with additional experiences. We have a Google Classroom for Tier 1 at BUES, where the student was able to engage in different resources put up there just for that student to engage in. The student was interested in dragons, scary stories, and anything art. So an example was a tutorial on how to draw dragons is an example of that interest enrichment. In kindergarten, there were students that were recommended by teachers, and it might be aligned to sports, you know, someone famous. And so they were included in, the Gateway teacher went and found literature or other works of art that could provide that exposure to the interest of the child that might not be in our regular curriculum during the day. So that's Tier 1. Tier 2 is core academic extension and enrichment. So in our classrooms, we have students that are high achieving in many areas, and what the Gateway Department does is create opportunities of voice and choice for students that extend that learning. In grades 3 through 7, we have all of those choices on a Google Classroom now. Thanks to COVID, we've learned how to use Google Classroom very well. So the Gateway teachers create all of those opportunities that align to the curriculum that's happening, and then take it up a notch, extend that learning. Think of it as multiple intelligences are infused. The Bloom's Taxonomy, the higher levels of Bloom's Taxonomy are infused in those choices. And so that also helps the classroom teachers to differentiate within the classroom, so students are able to engage in that. And when they submit things online in the Google Classroom, it goes directly to the Gateway teacher, and the Gateway teacher reviews it and provides feedback. So that's just another level of support for students that's within the general classroom. Tier 3 is what you would probably, if you've been in Barnstable for a while, that's the Gateway that we've had for a very long time. Tier 3 is that place where students are receiving, let's say, Tier 1, Tier 2, but that just isn't enough, and we need to provide a little bit more leveled support for that student. So once a week, students can be recommended for this tier, where they are meeting with the Gateway specialist. In 1st through 3rd grade, we have a rotation every seven weeks. There's a rotation of students, and these students are identified based on family recommendation, classroom teacher recommendation, staff recommendation, where they've seen something that I, which make sure that we identify that shine in that student. And in grades K to, 1st through 3rd, it's based more on critical creative thinking. We use what's called the PETS Program, Primary Education Thinking Skills Program. That is a gifted and talented program, and it's also infused with a lot of growth mindset. We found that a lot of students, as they go through education, there are very few opportunities where they really are truly challenged. So by the time they get to 4th and 5th grade, and they start to hit maybe a challenge, there's not a lot in their toolbox. They haven't had that experience, so we really work to challenge them, but also infuse that growth mindset, so that they're not seeing an area of difficulty as a definition of their character, that they are talented and they can persevere. So that is a large part of it. In grades 4 through 7, we start to do more in Tier 3 around academics, and it's a pullout for advanced math, advanced English language arts. Future problem solving starts in 4th grade, and then we get into competitive land in 7th through 12th, and we also have STEM, the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. In addition to that, we do have programs that go into the high school. They are more competitive and clubs. Our own Peter Good was a mock trial coach back in the day, and we have had mock trial, future problem solving, scenario writing. And Gateway also oversees the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program in the district. Here's the staff. So out of all of what I just shared with you, this is the staff, and as you can see, many of them are here tonight, and they sat through quite a bit waiting for this piece. And I would not be here. This is a team effort, and they are committed, amazing, caring people that are here for the students, work collaboratively with each other and with staff in the buildings, and have brought to life this program. So I wanted to publicly thank them for all of their efforts. The focus areas. So where have we been and where are we going? And I'm going to go back. In 2018, I was in a summer leadership institute at the time with leaders in our district, and we were looking at the disparity of equity in our school system, and Gateway was one of the areas that was highlighted. So following that, it really put a fire under us of what we needed to do. The first step was to learn more and find out. It's not obviously just Barnstable. It is an international, especially with gifted and talented programs. And so we really started to learn by going through a book study on achieving equity and gifted programming in our department. And our goal was to learn so that we could know better and then do better. And within that, we analyzed what we were doing, our current protocols, what barriers we were creating, and with an equity lens, start to make plans for how we could improve that. In some of those areas, we started to infuse what's called a talent pool. We did recognize that our process for having educators recommend students, we are human, and educators also have bias, so we were realizing that there was a place where we were creating a barrier. So we started to look more closely at our data in the district, and there might not be a student recommended, but we have a lot of data. For example, STAR MCAS, that is a norms-based data system, that we started pulling in students for our Gateway servicing. The next year, we continued with that, and we started to look more closely, based on our findings from the first year, at our focusing on race, implicit bias, and privilege, and what that, how that resonated with Gateway, by our stakeholders, what they felt, and what protocols and systems and structures we had within Gateway. So we started to analyze the current protocols for tiered support, and we really dug deeply into Tier 1 talent development. I will also note that that was 2020, and something else happened in 2020. The impact on the Gateway Department was that many of the teachers were pulled into the remote teaching, so they were actually remote teachers teaching classrooms at that time. So we did not have Gateway servicing that year, but we still worked as a team to continue developing and dismantling those barriers that we had. So Phase 3, 21-22, we started to take a deeper dive into more authentic identification, and specifically around multilingual learners, especially where our district is increasing in that population, we wanted to make sure. And when we looked at our population, the identification measures in Gateway did not align to the population that we had in Barnstable. So there was a disparity. We analyzed the barriers there. We worked on a culture of advocacy for multilingual learners. We worked closely with the ELL Department and the classroom, the teachers within the ELL Department, since they were working so closely with students, to educate them on there are talents in any student in our district, and how can we elevate those talents and develop them. We created more identification streams for multilingual learners, and over the summer, we had professional development for our department in relation to UConn. We're into this year. So this year, we continue with all of that, and included in that is another layer to identifying and working towards improving our understanding of Gateway and that it is for all students, the different tiers for our educators, our families. This year, I was fortunate enough to speak at CPAC, to explain to that group of families about the identification of what's called twice exceptional, and that is when students are on an IEP but also have exceptional qualities, and that there is a place in Gateway for students. We would hear, if they're in ELL, then they can't be in Gateway. If they're in special ed, they can't be in Gateway. And again, it's trying to get that message out, that Gateway is for all students. I also spoke at the LPAC this year, and I had the opportunity to speak at the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Belonging with a request to talk with that committee about Gateway and the way that we've gone about in the past years, our improvement to our program. This one's a little more tricky. I know Kristin appreciated it, there's a lot of math here. But in 2017, I had referenced that at the summer leadership, we were looking at our numbers in Gateway. I do want to point out that in 2017, we were only capturing in our, what we call Aspen system, we were only capturing students in grades 4 through 7 in Tier 3. However, we did start to work on Tiers 1 and Tier 2. At that time, they weren't being captured, they were just being developed, and if you will, piloted at that time. So the numbers here are on race and ethnicity. The numbers here represent what Gateway looked like in 2017, based on that capture. So 181 students were receiving Tier 3, that pullout, once-a-week support in Gateway. And then you'll see the breakdown of representation of race and ethnicity. Now, go to the other part of the slide. This is the current school year. I will say that this is the January data, so as of January of this year, and it increases. We receive daily recommendations for students, and you can see the jump. I also want to point out that, again, we were, we didn't have Gateway for an entire year, and then it was highly impacted, like everything else in education, even after that. So the numbers continue to grow as we get the message out about it's for all students in talent development and many different ways that we can support all students. The third row is for all students in our district, where it represents 2,946 students in January, and then the last column is for the Gateway students, and I will point out, that is from K to 7. I do not capture Tier 1 data in Aspen, because it is all students. We do have a documentation system where clearly we're communicating with the Gateway teacher and the classroom teacher, but for the purposes of Aspen, we track Tier 2 and 3 and who are receiving those services, so that is represented there. So that is represented there. And you can see the increase in populations and identifications. Are we there yet? Nope, we're not. But we are definitely making efforts to work towards supporting all students in Gateway. Areas for growth, reviewing the identification, and also the support for underrepresented groups, specifically students of color and special education. Those are our two other areas that we feel that with everything else, we need to work to improve. Supporting professional development and planning for talent development. And with that DEI lens, that diversity, equity, inclusion. Joe?
How are we doing for gender equity?
For gender equity?
Yes, because I know that when we're talking about this, especially twice exceptional, I know that a lot of young, I don't know if you guys read a lot about what's happening with boys and men in the United States and especially in the academic world. But a lot of young boys will get often labeled ADHD or things like that. When they're just bored, they need to move their legs. And as we take away their recesses and push them down to standardized tests and all that stuff. I remember I had three recesses when I was young, which was not enough for me to get my energy out. So I was one of those kids labeled that, but a lot of-
You've come a long way.
Yeah, so students, a lot of students, though. Do you know what the breakdown is by gender?
Off the top of my head, no. But I will say-
Did you get that to me? Because I'm just curious.
Absolutely can. And I will say that it's not glaring. If it was glaring, then I'd know that, too. There are students in all of our supports that are-
Because it'd be interesting to see like, you know, like enrollment in AP classes and stuff. I know this is nationwide where it's, you know, it's mostly female in these classes. So something's happening along the way.
The underachievement also happens.
I don't know if anyone's watching out for that. So I don't know if there's, you know, so that's another thing that really-
Yeah, I noticed that last night at the National Honor Society as well.
So I can absolutely, thank you. Obviously, the communication. I'm here tonight, so hopefully that's going to be helping with families that are watching about communication with all stakeholders. We do have a Gateway webpage with a lot of information and a lot of supports and also links for students that are interested in different areas as well. And that is available for anyone on the web. So I continually get emails from tutors or homeschoolers across the country saying, "Thank you so much. I found your webpage on interest and we were able to support our research." So it's going beyond the schools in terms of that. But I do have a lot of people that contact me on behalf of Barnstable and say, "Wow, my school doesn't do this. How can I get a Gateway at my school?" So we are representing, we are representing Massachusetts in a different light in Barnstable, and I thank you for that. And obviously, all tiers are our focus. But that Tier One and interest enrichment for all students, that is the area that we will be truly developing even more so in the coming years. The last is that website that I shared with you. There are a couple of videos. We'll be putting more up. And there will be a spotlight coming out from the superintendent about Gateway. A former school committee member, Barbara Dunn, interviewed students because we wanted students' voice. I can stand here and tell you about Gateway. Teachers can tell you about Gateway. When you hear it from students, your heart wells and we know we're doing something good. So please take a look at that spotlight. And as soon as we can, we will be getting up those interviews so that you can actually see the students speaking about their experience in Gateway. So, contact, Deanna Pulcifer. She is the other brain in our department. She, I call her my work wife. She is a driving force behind all of this as well, especially when I took on teaching and learning. She really helped to manage the Gateway piece as well. So we are available and please reach out if you have any questions. But before I sign off, is there, is there anything else that you-
Yes, I'll open it up to everybody. Any questions? Peter, go ahead.
Sure. I actually have a few of them. Good to see you, Carrie.
Nice to see you.
And any program that has a fine teacher like Lisa Marks in it, I'm sure is a fabulous program. I guess I just have to get my head around some of the changes. I've been out of teaching four years and the changes are just incredible that have gone on. And I guess, I still don't understand Gateway for all students because I always, while teaching, was for able students. So is this now an enrichment, like a music class? Is that what it is?
It's called, it's a school-wide enrichment model. And the school-wide enrichment model actually comes from Joseph Franzuli, who is a guru in, a founding father, if you will, of gifted and talented. And he is out of UConn. The school-wide enrichment was to take away that able and recognize that all students are able. All students have talents and we want to cultivate and develop those talents. So the Tier One Gateway for all students would be to identify, what are the specific talents? If they're academic, we have academic supports for that.
And you're saying all students in Barnstable go through this?
Have the opportunity to go through.
Have the opportunity.
That's, that's the key piece.
Okay, so how do I get the opportunity?
So we're getting the message out to teachers. We actually, and I'm going to thank you for this because we have now developed a family survey, a recommendation, if you will, for families to be inputting that. This past year, we also put up on our website and we've shared with families what's called an action information form where students, families, staff, educators can say, "Hey, we just had, Andre, you put something up about wet fest at BUES. That was an enrichment that happened at BUES. But Heather Ray or Aaron Batson Heath, the teachers, might have a student that can't get enough of that, can't stop talking about it. It really intrigued them." The interest piece of it, the classroom teachers have a lot of curriculum, right? That might not be something that they can continue to talk about for the rest of the year, but we can jump on and provide additional support.
It's hard to change my mind, I guess, after so many years. So I taught for 30-something years. When I started teaching in the elementary school, there was a Gateway specialist. There'd be, I don't know, in a team of, you know, 50, 60 kids, there might be eight or 10 kids who would benefit from advanced math or reading or something like that. So that is still going on, is what you said? That's Tier Three?
Right, that's Tier Three, yep. When they're pulled out like that. But they might be academically achieving and also be in the classroom and accessing some of those enrichment opportunities.
But you're saying-
This is in addition.
So that's still happening, Peter?
It's still happening, but you said every seven weeks.
Yep, so first through, and I don't say K because K is not one we pull out, but first through third grade. There are so many changes with students in first through third grade. And we want to make sure that we're supporting as many students as we can. So what happens is every seven weeks, teachers recommend different students. And they go through a seven-week pull-out class once a week. And this is Tier Three.
Tier Three, you're right.
Which is a lot like what you were talking about.
It's a different group of seven kids. So back when I was teaching elementary, it was the same eight or 10 or whatever, 11 kids throughout the year. So now they're only getting seven weeks of it.
They might have more than one week. So let's say there's a student that is recommended for Rotation One. They're in. If we don't have additional recommendations to fill those spots, we usually look at about 10 students, mostly because of the space that we have to provide that support. So we pull in 10 students. If there's only seven that were recommended for the next one, we look at, okay, what are, who are some students that really were at the level where they truly would need more of that? So we pull in other students that maybe were in a rotation before. So it might happen. But it's not as set like we used to have it where you're in it, you're in it till the end of the year.
You've said some great things tonight. That is a little concerning to me because of the kids I'm picturing that back in the day when I taught that group. And these kids, you know, they're academically gifted, talented. And I used to say, they have their special needs. And their special needs are to be motivated, to be challenged. And, you know, maybe seven weeks is not enough. And since I've been elected to the school committee, Carrie, I've been very concerned about keeping Barnstable students in Barnstable, not losing to the Sturgis Schools or Pope John Paul or any of the- There's great competition here. And I often am told that our best and our brightest tend to go. And I don't have the hard data on that. I've asked that, like, exit surveys of these kids that leave, why are you leaving? But it's concerning of this population isn't getting what they used to get.
So let me explain because I think that you've misunderstood and I don't want to leave here with some misunderstanding.
I usually misunderstand, so feel free to correct me.
I'll scaffold it. So the students that are, and this is one through three, grades one through three. Grades four through seven, there are multiple classes that are provided for students. But that's in addition to Tier Two and Tier One.
So you're saying four to seven is more of the way I imagined it?
Correct.
All right, well, that was a good way to explain.
Grades one through three, not only are they having that pull-out once a week for seven weeks, and then they might go into another rotation in another seven weeks, and there might be a, you know, many of them have repeat rotations as the year goes on. The other piece of that is now we have Tier Two. Tier Two is a challenge that's provided every day in the classroom, an opportunity for students to be challenged and extended on academics in the classroom every day that we didn't have back then. So when they were pulled out for that 45 minutes, it was once a week.
And how do you provide that? With a Gateway teacher that goes into a classroom?
Yep.
Okay, so your staff has increased since?
No.
No, it hasn't?
Do you look at that staff? No.
Well, I will support you. I'll guarantee you that. Next year, when they ask for my budget input, the first thing I'll say is Gateway.
We did increase in terms of the elementary K to three. I had mentioned that I was the one that went to all five schools. We have two teachers now that are split for the five schools. West Villages has the largest population of students. So Lynn Taber is Monday and Tuesday at West Villages and then Hyannis West on Wednesday. And, but she's 8.6. And Ellen Zantini is at BWB Centerville and BCIS.
Well, somewhere around next December or January, when Sarah Hearn asked for my input, the first thing I'm going to say is the Gateway budget.
It all comes back to the superintendent, Peter.
Yes, thank you. And I'll end it with a very quick story because I was the mock trial coach. And we had, we had a lawyer that would come in and help. It volunteers, is he still doing it? He'll go nameless.
We're hoping to get him here in June to talk about mock trial. And you might be part of that. You just didn't know it yet.
Oh, God. And I said, "We got to do something for this guy. This guy's incredible." And so Carrie said, "Budget, you don't have any money." And I said, "You know, we at least take him out to dinner." And she said, "Okay, you know, I got $100." I said, "All right." Well, he orders a Grey Goose martini to start with.
It was $100.
There goes the budget. He had a couple more and we went way past the Gateway budget.
He might not come in June now, Peter.
It's a different guy now. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Go ahead, Andre.
Yes.
Just want the line.
So for me, you know, thank you for the presentation. It's quite informative. You've been in the district since 97, you know, working in Gateway. There's been major improvements that we saw in 2012. And then recently, you know, we've been looking at the program and accessibility to the program and where we can kind of improve there. So you've said a number of things. You know, my questions center around the recommendation process. And so you alluded that it's family members, teachers, and staff who are recommending our students for Gateway.
And students.
And students themselves. Okay, so family, teacher, staff, and then students advocating for themselves. And so my question is, what about those students who don't have a family member to advocate for them in terms of getting into the program? Because just to concur with Peter, it's nice that you've changed the name to Gifted and Talented Education with All Youth in order to reflect inclusion and accessibility. You know, but Gateway does indicate those of our youth that are able and that have shown distinctive talents in the classroom. To Peter's point, our best and brightest, that is notable. And we saw all of those students here today earlier on. And so in looking at the breakdown, to start with, those students that do not have a family member to advocate for them, how are they entering the program?
Teacher. It could be other students. It could be the teacher. It could be the students themselves. But in, I did allude to it, and I can share with you what our talent pool process is, where we look at the academically achieving scores as well. Sometimes students will test really well, but their performance in class might not mirror their abilities. So we wouldn't have a teacher recommending if that was the case. So we do look at scores to identify students as well. But in terms of that, I think you had mentioned embedded into your question that the Gateway program is primarily for those able students. And I would challenge that all students have talents and that's what this program is about as well, which is different than what we used to have it as. So it's really working to develop talents in students that we might not be developing in our other tiers. Tiers, Tier Two and Three are primarily around academics. But I mentioned about the student that the art might not score in the ELA or math ability, but art is his passion. So that's the piece as well that's missing.
Understood, thank you. And so in the absence of the family member, it's going to be a teacher or staff member making the recommendation. And you've highlighted that. But when I look at the breakdown of who's in the program, I'm not seeing those numbers reflective of our district, the totality of our district. And so we're missing, that's what I'm seeing.
I completely agree.
A large portion of our best and brightest in this program, which needs to be addressed. So I'm just, I'm mindful. You've been in the program since 97. Some of the people in the program were my former teachers, okay? That worked with me and I needed some working with. And then we can talk about those stories. They remember, I remember. And so the program is doing a tremendous job. And we have a, I'm seeing that we're aware of these things. But I think that there's still a noticeable disparity that we can address forcefully immediately. Meaning if we look at our district, we're large, we're diverse, we're a very diverse district. But that diversity is not being seen. And that's what I'm just having an issue with. Because I know, based on the students that just received awards to begin the program, that our students are quite capable across the board. So this, the recommendation piece, if it's not a family member who's advocating, and it's our staff and our teachers that are advocating, but we're still missing a great portion of the students, I'm wondering how are we going to, how are we going to close that gap? that gap?
That is still the work to be done. Absolutely. So, yeah. So in improving, and that's where I had mentioned, we're not there yet. Absolutely not. I agree 100% with what you just said. If you have ideas, I'd love to hear them. But it's in research, in analysis of what we're doing, in communication with those stakeholders that do recommend and breaking down those misunderstandings or biases that they may have to help support that. I do believe we're on the right track.
So thank you. I do have some ideas. We've participated and you've been in to some meetings and we've talked and we'll continue to talk. But just in conclusion, you know, it's just those two things for me. I want to make sure that both are clear. The program's tremendous and we're doing an outstanding job. And that was seen in terms of the work that you're doing and in terms of, you know, the awards that we kind of gave out tonight. But the reason that this is an important point of emphasis, you know, Peter talked about the best and brightest and how we need to identify them and how we need to retain them. And that's first and foremost and it's starting with you. And to make sure that those advanced students are being challenged early on in their journey straight throughout. But the last thing that I'll say and then turning it over to my colleagues, you know, it's this, it's not just that the student is not, we're not bringing those that are out there into the fold so that they can participate and have access to these tremendous resources. It's the perception of themselves. And we're talking about first grade, second grade, third grade. How you see yourself as a student is really a large part in relation to how other people tell you that you are. And so if staff member, you know, you're getting your encouragement, enthusiasm from the staff members, from your support system. And if they've saying that you can, well, then I guess I can do it.
You can do it, right?
And so that piece, I just, I want to note that as well. You've identified it. I have no doubt that resources are being deployed. I'm confident, frankly, that when we have this presentation next year, we'll see it reflected in the data. But those are the reasons that I just, bringing those students into the fold and making sure that you're making those recommendations and including those students. And they may not score as high, okay, but let's give them a chance in Gateway, as Mike has alluded to with the JRTC program. Give them a chance in the program to have that designate. And if it's not for them, okay, everybody can do it. But that we bump up those numbers, particularly at the one through three level and then further throughout their education, so that those students can participate and to build the confidence. And again, if it's not for you, then it's not for you, okay? But you at least had the attempt and I'm confident that's going to take place.
Well, you had the opportunity.
You had the opportunity.
It's all about the opportunity.
So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Joe?
I'm a big fan of Gateway and anything that's, you know, I'm a true believer in that the future of our democracy and our country will depend on how we educate our exceptional, most exceptional, because those that are exceptional can end up, as history has shown, exceptionally good or exceptionally bad, right? And we've seen that happen. And so when talent, I loved a lot of things. One, that you branched out further with what's considered exceptional and the talents, the different talents and understanding the multiple intelligences. Twice exceptional has always been an issue. We found that many geniuses in the past have had other things that weren't considered so genius, whether it be psychological issues happening, social issues, physical disabilities, different languages speaking, the fact that you're recognizing that with our large multilingual population, that we're starting trying to identify that. And what you alluded to, it sounds to me like, and just correct me if I'm wrong, that the K through three is kind of giving everybody, kind of get more people in to see where our teachers here will identify, oh, this is clicking, they're taking advantage of it and it's helping. And sometimes that pullout place isn't, might not be a place where someone is as comfortable or they're not growing in that thing. And that's why we're creating, am I right? That we're actually...
It's absolutely why we're doing the rotations.
This K through three is kind of like, we're trying to get as many people through this door to kind of try these little activities. Because as we know, you know, some students don't work as well independently. They need a lot more guidance. And some kids, you send them somewhere and they just keep heading. You know, I would love to see this expand more. And when I met with the superintendent, we spoke about, you know, I would love to see, you know, advanced academic program at the high school where we had a place where anyone could come in and it would be a place, because for some kids, academics is their thing. Like that's their thing. That's our identity, you know?
Correct.
Some kids. And I've been, you know, at a high school, we had a place where anyone could come in, you know, choose your thing and, you know, to stay in this, you needed to keep a certain average or whatever. But you could be, you know, you take one or two AP classes, but the door's always open to come in and then you graduate with a special tassel to complete it. So for that student that you're talking about, you know, the artist, you know, we have advanced placement art and advanced placement music and theory and things like that. So, you know, finding those talents, you know, that, you know, and there's, you know, there's leadership talent, there's social talent, there's, you know, all these other different creativities that students might have these high IQs and that obviously I'm not, we're talking like way down the road, obviously, you know, right now, just trying to figure out the kids, you know, obviously. But the fact that I, what I'm seeing is, I like that this has branched out to, you know, getting the kids in it that will benefit, because it is a limited program, right? So the kids that will benefit the most from this type of thing, I like that we're kind of doing that. And I love the option. I mean, teachers will see it, these guys will see it in K through three. New students come in and we'll kind of feel it out. And I like that, you know, that students can advocate for themselves or for their friends.
Correct.
And from my understand, the door never closes, right? You're in the fifth or sixth grade and you're saying, you know what? This kid, you know, snoozing in class, pulling straight A's, starting to throw, I was like throwing things, you know, just started causing trouble.
Development happens at different times.
I thought it was, I thought I was putting this program because I was a troublemaker, but it was, you know, apparently I was a little bit bored. So, you know, and that's the thing. I mean, I was just looking through the, I was just looking through the National Honor Society list and it looks to me that the vast majority, I don't know, Peter, you said it was mostly female. I would love to know if it was, if we could get that percent, what percent of the National Honor Society was male, if we could get those numbers, just in the newest induction. Because if, I'm guessing, I'm not a mathematician, but I know, around 50% of the population identify as male at the school. So I imagine close to 50% of the National Honor Society should probably also be too. So I'd like to make sure that we have that National Honor Society be close to half male. Because if it's one-third male, that's significant, that's a significant difference. Then what are we doing with our young men to make them, let them know that being smart's okay? Being cool's okay, but maybe smart's cool, you know? And maybe it happens, you know? That's your, no.
That's my job.
I'm joking.
Thanks, Joe, thanks.
I'm really impressed with what you guys are doing. Thank you so much because this is, this is important work for all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy?
So I'll keep it short. You've been here for a while.
It was supposed to be 15 minutes. I'm sorry.
Right, I was curious, do you still have Destination Imagination? Is that still one of the...
We do not. That was a program that we did have pre-COVID. And the person, Lenore Frue, who has been in Gateway, she did retire. And then COVID happened right at the same time when she retired. And as you can imagine, that was a program that we couldn't run during COVID. It's highly collaborative and you can't do that program six feet apart.
But it still exists. It's still something that could be coming down the road. I know, I thought, I didn't know if it was just an error that it was omitted or that it was just stopped.
Maybe next year's budget could help.
It is, it is a line item that still exists, but we did feel that we were still kind of healing.
Well, it's going to take a while.
And to get to that point, yes, but absolutely.
And for people that don't know about Destination Imagination, typically, I believe it started in second grade and at least when my daughter was in, I remember her first thing, she was in second grade in Barnstable. And some of the core kids, they gel as a group and they, they move through the grade level as a team. So the team stays cohesive even after that initial, initial, you have some, one or two might fall off or go away or come back, but they typically stay together. I would be interested, not for a redo of the stats or the data now, but the next time you report, you were talking about that core group number of the four to seven in the traditional mode that Peter was talking about. I would like to see that extracted, just to see how that's progressing.
Where we're going.
But don't do it over. We have too much. We don't want to put Mo over the edge. It's just a curiosity.
Sure.
Is all that it is. So I would ask for that the next time. And then I happened to be at the CPAC meeting where you spoke and then I gave the wrong person the kudos initially, so I apologize. I do know who you are as well as the other person. I just misspoke that night. But I remember after you had left, somebody made the comment that they didn't really believe that it was going to happen. So one thing that I noticed in the slide that has all the personnel, there is a special ed teacher and I know she's dual certified. So for those people who have not, it was, she was a high school teacher. So for those parents out there who doubted this, you can see that you are expanding to include that expertise. Not that every student with a disability needs to have a special ed teacher, but it's that one component that's different that was not there before. So we can see that the district is serious about expanding and including everybody. And I can remember one student as a real little kid that I had come across who had such a talent for the drawing. It was unbelievable. She could have illustrated books, yet the academic piece was missing. And so I agree with that philosophy. It's near and dear to my heart. But I think, I see what you're saying, Peter. My kids participated, some of them, and they liked it, some more than others. And so I had one who was dismissed. Dismissed because he didn't want to speak up and say, I don't want to do it anymore. And I was like, why are you doing this? He wanted to get thrown out. That was his strategy. And so they're always thinking.
That's a smart kid.
They're always thinking, so he was...
That's your entrepreneur.
Advocating in a different way.
Thinking outside the box, but the poor teacher who had to deal with them was another, another story. But thank you for your work. Thank you, people, for coming and giving up your evening.
Very dedicated.
I appreciate what you did.
Okay, so I'll try to make it as quick as possible, even though Kathy said she was gone and I don't think that was necessarily as quick as Peter's. I think Peter's got the record right now. So a couple of questions, first of all. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Thank you very much. So the 10 kids, you said there's 10 kids that, because of space, you said there was roughly 10 kids?
Generally speaking...
10 spots, I should say?
Right.
Is that per grade, per school?
It's, it is, we usually try to keep it at 10 for multiple reasons. With some schools, it is the actual space alone. BCIS, for example, it's akin to a closet right now that we're trying to find space to support students. The other piece is it's once a week. So Ellen Zantini goes to BCIS once a week.
Right.
It really is hard to, you know, they can't secure space and say, oh, we'll just hold that large space.
Right, 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 because it's only once a week.
It's only once a week.
So it's used for other things during that week other than that one. So it's a multi-use base type of thing, so.
Correct. The other piece of that, and I advocate very strongly for this, it's meant to be targeted, that Tier three is meant to be targeted small group instruction.
Right.
So that we can, much like someone said over here, it is truly, I think it was you, Peter, that it's truly a special ed for students. It's a specialized support, individualized support for students that are struggling in a different way. I usually say they're struggling because they're in class and maybe they're bored or so we're...
Be challenged more than what the normal academics is doing.
So they have needs as well. So I advocate for that 10, about a 10, which is not small group, that's a little bit larger, but about 10 students at a maximum so that we can target that support for them.
Right, right. No, I was just, I just wanted some clarification.
There's dual reasons, yeah.
I assumed it was per grade, but I just wanted to make sure. So I like, and I know, Peter, I understand what you're saying. So I'll take this more as a parent hat. So one of my sons who graduated in 2019, he wasn't one of the kids selected. He was on the cusp but wasn't selected. So mom and dad went out, like, he was in second grade, we bought academic books for third grade. And when he was in third grade, we bought academic books for fourth grade because he was one of the bored kids. He wasn't acting out, but he was just bored with where he was at. So mom and dad just did it on our own. We ran kind of our own Gateway program and challenged them at home. The problem that I have, the concern I always had with that is mom, okay, we had the resources and we had the time to do that. But like Andre said, what about the kids who don't have the families that will only put the resources or the time to do that? So those kids, I always felt, fell through the crack because it was for a year's program or, and the other thing is back then, I remember hearing from teachers in the K through three level is there's different subjects. So maybe at the beginning of the year, he or she is very strong, but by whatever they're dealing with in math, as of January, he or she is failing. But they're still being pulled off of Gateway even though they're not even mastering the stuff that they're doing in the classroom. So that was kind of always a, so whether it's seven weeks, 10 weeks, I kind of like that, to be honest. And I understand, Peter, 100% what you're saying. But having had a son who was one of the ones, out of number 10, he was probably number 11 or number 12, he may not get in the first seven weeks, but he's going to then have the opportunity to get in the second seven weeks.
Correct.
You know what I mean? And so that, I always, one of the problems I always had with Gateway is once you were in it, you were in it for the year.
It's fluid and it should be.
And a teacher couldn't say in December, listen, I don't want to send the Gateway because he or she is struggling. They were in it for the year. So the teacher had the recommendation, but then after that, they couldn't pull them out because they needed the extra help in the classroom about that part of math or English or whatever the case may be. So I like the fact that you've kind of resolved that and you're allowing more, okay, so the first group is seven, one through 10, but if you're number 15, you're going to get in and get the extra stuff that you need. So, and like I said, like Andre, I mean, we had the resources to do that for our, for our son, who then went on to, he didn't get in the Gateway, but when he, by the time he got to high school, he was taking mostly a majority of AP classes. So I mean, it just, he blossomed late. And that's what, I remember having that conversation with them, being like, bud, you just, you blossom, you're blossoming a little later than first grade. That's okay. I'm still waiting to blossom, so it's, it's okay, you know? But, but I like the fact that you've kind of like expanded it for the kids who aren't the first 10, but the kids who are the rest of the kids, who are still smart, who are still in the, like I said, who are still gifted and talented, but they just didn't make the cut. My only other question would be, so you get the recommendations, we talked about how you get all of these, these kids into the program. How do you decide if you have kids, if the first, say just in the fall, just because it's easier, you have 15 kids that get recommended for that program and you're only going to take 10, how do you decide which 10 do you take?
Really good question. Well, when it comes to first, second and third...
And I know it's not as big of a deal now because they're going to be in the second for seven weeks.
Right. When it comes to first, second and third, so one piece of that is normally we take the students that were recommended, let's say in June. Sometimes we'll get recommendations at the end of the year because the teacher's reflecting going, you know what, I should have recommended. So we'll get a slew of students that are recommended. We also look, let's say it's a second grade student that probably was in a rotation or a few rotations in first grade. We look at those students and say, you know what? We're going to pull those students first. Get them started, get them with, so that's how we do select that first crew.
Okay.
And then from there, we start unfolding other students within.
Yeah, and then you just keep, then it's kind of, after that first group, it's kind of...
But it is, as you, as you mentioned, it's a lot easier now. And years and years and years ago, we used to test in first or second grade. And in 1997, we did it in third grade. And if you did well on that test, you were in.
You were in it for the year, whether you did good academically for the entire year or not.
So it's evolved.
Right, no, I agree. And I thank you for doing that because I think it's, I think it's more fair, but it just allows more, like you're saying, you're allowing more kids to be in it. And that's how you're allowing more kids to be in it. And I agree that you're right, it's the gifted and talented, but there's more than 10 kids in each grade that are gifted and talented. So you got to try to include as many of them as you can.
And who are we to say what is gifted and talented?
Well, that's the thing. If I'm not good in academics, but I'm good in art or music or something else, it's another avenue.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments or anybody? No, we're all good? Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
I did find the numbers, 22 out of the 60 inducted were male, so, which is like one-third, so.
But I'll get you the other numbers, too.
Statistically significant, almost impossible to have happened through a random sample, so I'm not sure if there's some bias in that, but got to watch out for our boys, too.
So, we're going to, so thank you, Carrie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a good night. So, we're now going to move on to 5.2, approve revised project-based learning coach job description.
Thank you.
Is this?
That's it.
Sarah.
Thank you. So, as part of the budget for next year, you approved a restoration of the PBL Coach at BCIS, which is going to integral to its innovation plan. So, in your packet is a draft coach job description that has been revised from the previous coach job description. We modeled it off of the current math coach job description, and this individual would be pushing into classrooms to work with teachers and students, as well as doing some one-on-one coaching with staff on a rotating basis.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Anything? Nothing? Seeing nothing? Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve the revised project-based learning coach job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll take it.
Having a motion seconded, voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 5.3, approve revised ELL teaching assistant job description. Sarah?
Thank you. So, also, in the budget this year, you approved several teaching assistant paraprofessional positions for the EL department to support our EL students. This is a revised job description. We used to have EL paraprofessionals years ago, but we revised the job description to be consistent with the teaching assistant job descriptions that you approved as part of the, kind of, special ed review of job descriptions earlier this year.
Have any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the revised ELL teaching assistant job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, is voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 5.4, approve school committee policies in Section A through H previously approved in form. Kathy?
Okay. So, when we started the process of reviewing the entire Barnstable School District Policy Manual, it was recommended to us that we approve each section in form as each section was completed, and at the very end, when all the sections were completed and approved in form, you would do a formal approval of the entire policy manual. The subcommittee had a discussion at its last meeting, and we feel that it's really important that the revisions that were made to the policies and approved by the school committee in form, which is essentially an approval, that they be formally approved and implemented after the approval, so that the district's policies are as up-to-date as possible and published that way, and that they're ready for the handbooks that are being prepared for the next academic year. So, Peter, do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
I'm okay.
All right, so.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Do we have any questions? Any questions? Seeing none? Go ahead, make the motion.
Okay. So, move to approve the school committee policies in Sections A through H that have been previously approved in form.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 5.5, create policy I, J, and D, the social media. Kathy?
So, during the policy review process, we've discovered that there is no social media policy that Barnstable has. The superintendent felt that it was really, really critical that we bring, have a policy for Barnstable, given what happens on social media a lot, and to make sure that the district's view of social media, especially regarding teacher and teacher-staff to student communication via social media, will always be with the protection of the student foremost in our minds. So, this is a first read. Policy is posted. I know that Superintendent Ahern had sent it out. I was copied on that email, so I do know that staff has it. Peter mentioned he's received some input. I haven't personally received anything yet, but I'm happy to see that people are reviewing it, and I encourage anybody with an opinion to contact either Peter or me.
So, Peter, I know you had some stuff to say. Do you want to speak, or do you want me to see if, Sarah, do you have anything to chime in first, or do you want to see what Peter? Yeah, you want to go with Peter? Go ahead, Peter. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, back to the meeting that we had. As we're going through this, I mean, this is a complaint from a guy who has absolutely no social media life. You know, there's nothing. However, when we're going through this, I had brought up a point of like, well, don't coaches need to speak to their team, sometimes as an individual, sometimes as a group? I was trying to think it through, and when I see B, it says, "All electronic contacts with students should be through the district's computer and telephone system, except emergency situations." So, so that eliminates a text.
Well, so, what we were talking about is the fact that it's trying to make sure that if we have a coach and we brought up, maybe we should have, coaches should have school-issued phones. We're trying to eliminate personal social media for staff.
I do understand the big picture to, you know, you know, to the safety of the students. This was brought to me just the other day. This actually happened, and it would, it would break the policy of, of our policy. Somebody was driving off Cape, forgot she had the, left the dryer on. The dryer does not have a shut-off button, or it broke. So, she texted a Barnstable High student who's a neighbor to come over to the house and shut off the dryer, go on the back door, shut off the dryer. The way I read it, that would have broken the Barnstable policy, because she didn't include a parent or a principal or...
So, and if...
Which, to me, is 100% ridiculous.
There is a line, I can bring it up. There is a line at the end of the policy that states that if there is a...
Family members.
Family, no, a relationship.
It's a neighbor.
Maybe that needs, that might need to be tweaked, yeah.
Actually, can I just jump in? Kathy, can I have this, probably the superintendent, because this is kind of her policy versus, not her policy, but like, she can kind of give the rationale? Is that?
Sure. So, I think one of the important things here is that it is a first read, so people have the opportunity to weigh in on kind of the practical ramifications of various pieces of language. So, one of the things that came to me was around coaches and communication or advisors relevant to, for example, the Italy trip. There was probably some sharing of cellphone numbers in order to communicate on the Italy trip. And then, there are also apps being used, and I think the Remind app is one that teachers use. It is highly rated and actually very much suggested, because it's very friendly in multiple languages. So, I think there's an element, maybe to expand the idea of what district-approved communications are, based on how people are communicating, while also building in some of those protections, because you want to avoid, you know, kind of that, you want to maintain boundaries between teachers and students. So, this is a good opportunity, I think, to collect those examples and then work on some language that clarifies what district-approved would be. And I think if people are kind of above board and sharing that they're communicating with students based on a trip, or, you know, I think that I, I did hear about the coach comment. I wanted to talk to Athletic Director Steve Centus to see if he had any ideas or what best practices might be going on in other districts. So, I think we can, you know, the, at the first read stage, and we can bring it back to the policy subcommittee in a couple of weeks and revisit some of it.
So, I'm asking you, Kathy, or you, Peter, because you're both on this. So, I would assume you're, we're going to want people, if anybody has any questions, concerns, anything like that out in the public, staff, to have them send either Peter or Kathy emails. And so, this is still in the, I just, so this is exactly what, what they did with Peter as far as letting Peter know. That's what, that's what the staff needs to do. They need to let Peter or Kathy know, because it's still in their policy, it's still in their subcommittee, to let them know, because this is still in the discussion phase and within your, within your subcommittee. So, I think that's like what people did as far as emailing Peter or talking to Peter about it, or Kathy, and let them know, like, what your input, because this is still being discussed amongst their, their subcommittee, which includes the superintendent, and I believe the attorney also. So, I think that this isn't, this, we're not voting on this tonight. This is in the discussion phase. So, within the next couple, when is your next meeting?
Yeah, May 19th.
So, within the next couple of weeks, by May 19th, if you have any input to this, and you want your input to be used to create, to craft this policy, send it in.
So, what I would say, too, is, is that the, you know, policy, the, the, the policy on creating and revising policy states that we need to have two reads, but there's nothing that prohibits having three reads or four reads. And so, if, you know, especially when we're trying to take input from others and wordsmith or put it in a policy that's going to be broad enough that it's not confining, yet clearly convey the district's expectations.
Positions, yeah.
It's the expectations. My guess would be that we try to think about everything. We try to think what, what the what-ifs are, but we can't hit them all. And so, it is an open meeting, too. The Zoom link is posted, the agenda's posted, and it's public, just like this meeting is. So, absolutely, you know, it's, it's hard to write these policies.
So, this is, so, once again, this is, I always say, and I guess I, I guess I kind of make a mistake, because I always say, whenever we do a first read, I'm always looking at, at the, the, the school committee members and saying, "If you have any changes." But that also goes for the public. I mean, the public can weigh in on policies, and, and as we do a first read, they have the right to email the two of you. So, if anybody out there in the public wants to weigh in on this policy or any other policies as they're being created, please don't hesitate to do so.
Yeah, Mike, just along those lines, you know, Kathy, I think, you know, you've highlighted an important component of the school experience and of education, and in terms of providing, you know, clarity, you know, in terms of looking at these, you know, stipulations, you know, improper fraternization with students via social media, you know, and you're highlighting, you know, may not friend or follow a current student, you know, on social media. You know, that's, that's an important area of clarification in terms of what our policies are, because certain accounts, you know, for instance, if it's Instagram, you know, and you, you don't, you have a public account, anybody can follow you. If that's, you know, you have an Instagram, you know, "People follow me." I, you know, whereas Facebook, you know, it's a friend request that you have to approve. You know, what is, you know, what's the line in the sand? You know, if it's a student that is a current student versus a student that graduated? You know, I think there, it's important that you're bringing this up, and I think, from our standpoint as a district, and maybe with an eye towards professional development, just making it crystal clear what the parameters are, where we stand, you know.
Where those lines are.
Where those lines are.
Don't make them blurry.
Yes.
That is the line, period.
And so, Kathy, I think, you know, it's prudent that we're looking at this, you know, and not so much in a reactive standpoint, you know, that we're, you know, if a situation's happening, then we have to go back and, you know, but we're saying, out front for everybody, you know, again, you know, I think that's, you know, from the community standpoint, you know, we, they just want that clarity, that communication piece. And I think for ourselves, as a district and then as educators, you know, let's just make it clear, because it's, you know, well, this, this social media platform has one guideline, the other has another guy, you know, and I have, we all have a number of accounts, and so I'm not, you know, this one, I don't, you know. So, I think it's in good keeping, and this is the first read, and, you know, further examination is, is in order.
Anybody else? No? We're all set? Okay, so that's first read. We'll have a short more discussion about it. 5.7, revised policy JICFB bullying prevention. Kathy?
No.
No, wait a minute. Why did I do that?
5.6.
Oh, there it is. Revised, 5.6, revised policy JFABF, educational opportunities for children in foster care.
So, this is a first read as well. There was some, there were some language changes that were made simply for clarity, so, and they're redlined.
Okay. Can I get a motion? Oh, this is a first read. Yep, this is a first read. Okay, so now, we're going to be moving on to 5.7, revised policy JICFB bullying prevention.
And this policy was updated to make sure that the language is consistent with the procedure. When we have a policy, it's broad-based, and then the district needs to have procedures to ensure that the policy's being followed, and so, we need to make sure that all the language aligns. The MASC recommended policy has revised the language, so we also included that, such as target replaces victim and for gender neutral. It moved out the procedures. We've been moving the procedural language out of the policies to make sure that when a procedure needs to be updated, it's able to be done so within the superintendent's discretion without needing two reads and an approval. And that, again, is because the procedures are simply the steps that are in place to ensure the policies are being followed. There was also a statement about false accusations included.
Okay. Any question? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, and some wording to include some extenuating circumstances language was added.
Okay, so that's a first read, so if anybody has anything, we'll take that up again next month. 5.8, suspend policy BGB policy adoption. Kathy?
Move to suspend policy BGB policy adoption for item 5.9 on tonight's agenda. Do you want an explanation?
Yeah, so the explanation on this, so as you just, as folks in the public just found out, we do two reads on everything. So, this is suspending that need for two reads on our next agenda item.
And the reason is because we're in the middle of, we're in the middle of registering new students, and the upcoming policy is dealing with the registration process.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Wait, so we're on 5.9. So...
Nope, we didn't adopt 5.8 yet. You didn't make a motion.
Move to suspend, I did the motion. We need a second.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, having a motion seconded, voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 5.9, approve revised policy JFAA school admissions residency requirement.
So, the change in this policy is to reduce the number of proofs of residency from three, which is the current, to two. The review of the policy at other schools, none of them require three. Some have one proof of residency, others have two. Registration for kindergarten is ongoing. Sometimes, when there are people new to the district, it's difficult to pull together all the proofs of residencies, proof of residency within a manageable time period for students to attend school.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve revised policy JFAA school admissions residency requirement as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 6.1, approve special education teacher position at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary School. Sarah?
Thank you. So, this is a request to approve a teaching position at BWB. Earlier this year, probably in the January or February timeframe, we were having a difficult time filling paraprofessional positions, and the principal had requested kind of a change in the budget for the remainder of the year. This would make that change permanent going into FY '24, because in the budget that you approved, it restored it back to paraprofessionals. But the model is working well, and we'd like you to approve the special education teacher position in lieu of those paras, those two paras for next year. position in lieu of those paras, those two paras for next year.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve special education teacher position at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary School as presented in tonight's materials.
Second. Having a motion seconded, is voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 6.2, approve the FY23 on-call architecture engineer design service for Barnstable Public Schools. Mike, welcome.
Good evening, Mike Lambros, Facilities Director. So this is just, we have an on-call three-year architect and engineers. The current expired as of January 1st, we went out, we procured, we received six, interviewed, and we've settled on five that we're presenting tonight. This does not obligate us to any funds for these firms, it just puts them on retainer should we use them for engineering such as, so one of the previous is currently doing the workforce for the portables, for example, so any CIPs, we typically use them to assist with plans, drawings, engineering.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the fiscal year 23 on-call architecture engineer design services for Barnstable Public Schools by awarding the contract for subject services to BLW Engineers Incorporated, Habib and Associates, Gannett and Fleming, Rouse Architects Incorporated, and TBA Architects as presented in tonight's materials.
Having a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Thank you, Mike. Moving on to 6.3, student activity account audit approval. Welcome.
Thank you very much, good evening. We are seeking the school committee's approval this evening for us to move forward with an audit of the district's student activities accounts. Mass general law requires that we audit these accounts on an annual basis. It can be done by someone in-house identified by the committee, or done by an outside auditing firm. So it is time for these accounts to be audited. We've reached out to Powers &amp; Sullivan, who is the town's auditing firm, they do the town's comprehensive financial audit, as well as the district's annual DESI financial reporting audit, and they have provided us with a proposal and an estimated timeframe for this work, which is included in your packet this evening. So happy to answer any questions that you might have, but we anticipate the work, should the committee decide to move forward, to wrap up by the end of May.
Okay, so it's a relatively quick, quick, quick process, okay. Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the audit of the student activity accounts as presented in tonight's materials.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 6.4, audit report of FY22 end-of-the-year financial reporting. Chris, welcome back.
Thank you. This is just an informational item for the school committee. Speaking of audits, here are the findings from Powers &amp; Sullivan on the district's FY22 annual reporting requirements. This letter here has no findings, and essentially says that the district is reporting, structuring its budget as we should be to be in compliance with DESI.
Excellent. Do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, we, that's an informational only. So we're moving on to 6.5, approve FY22 grants, gifts, and donations. Do we have it? We.
There are two grants.
Yeah, we already have it posted. Do we have any questions? Having no questions, can I get a motion?
Move to approve grants, gifts, and donations as outlined in the documents presented tonight.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, this is a voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 6.6, budget transfer authorization, can I get a motion?
I don't think we are any.
There aren't any?
No budget transfer.
Okay, so, okay. None, so, I think.
That's the last one.
Yep, I know, I'm getting there. 6.7, approve accounts payable warrant FY22 warrant number 44.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant number 44 in the amount of $678,026.87.
Having a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, is voiced forward, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it four to one. Now moving, thanks, Chris. Moving on to 7.0, executive session. Make a move to go into executive session, actually, let me first follow executive session, to approve the school committee executive session minutes of March 15, 2023, to discuss salary adjustments for non-affiliated personnel, to discuss the terms and conditions of non-affiliated personnel contracts, and discuss strategy with respect to litigation. I'm actually going to take the discuss strategies with respect to litigation when I do the motion, because I was notified that we don't need to do that. So I'm going to make a motion, move to go into executive session, not to reconvene an open session, to approve the school committee executive session minutes of March 15, 2023, to discuss salary adjustments for non-affiliated personnel, to discuss the terms and conditions of non-affiliated personnel contracts. Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, is a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair is a yes, passes unanimously. That will adjourn our public meeting. Have a good night.